I call to order the City of Leavenworth Planning Commission, regular session, Monday, December 2nd, 2019, 6:00 PM. We have established a quorum, and I just need approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2019. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. New business, conduct a public hearing for case number 2019-15 SUP 729 Pennsylvania. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow the operation of an adult daycare center at 729 Pennsylvania in an existing building located on the St. Cashmere Church property.
Yep. Okay, thank you. As you said, this is a request to allow operation of an adult daycare center at 729 Pennsylvania. It is on the St. Cashmere Church property. There are four separate buildings on the property, and this is the Western Most, one-story brick building right there on the corner of Broadway and Pennsylvania, and it previously had a preschool or daycare in that several years ago that was operated by the church. So the applicant, Elaine Bellardo, is with the Deeper Window Project, and they are looking to open again an adult daycare facility at this location. Our current development regulations do not have a definition for an adult daycare facility or anything like that, and so when we get requests for a use that is not defined in the regulations, we have to consider it against the next closest definition that we have, which in our regulations would be a childcare facility. So childcare centers are allowed in a residential zoning district, which this is, with the issuance of a special use permit, so that's how this is before you tonight. So the proposed use would involve daytime care and programming for adults living with early and middle stages of dementia and Alzheimer's. There would be two separate 16-person groups that would meet either Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday of each week, with Friday open at the center for socialization, and the participants would be meeting here from 9:00 to 3:00 during the day. This is a non-medical program, and this would just be offering respite care to the participants' caregivers and some socialization and just activities for the folks using the facility. The program will be staffed by a primary and assistant facilitators, and then additional therapists and volunteers would be brought in for various activities going on throughout the week at the center. And the state of Kansas does not require license for adult daycare centers, which is one difference from a childcare facility. So the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit based on four criteria that I'll just go through briefly. The first is that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the ordinance. Staff does believe that to be the case with this application. The second is that the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, and convenience of the public. There is a current need within the community for adult daycare-type uses. Residents caring for family members with dementia or Alzheimer's have few to no resources for this type of use within the community, and the proposed facility will allow caregivers' respite to help improve their overall well-being of both the caregivers and the participants. Number three is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the proposed use will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. And number four, that the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood, so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. There are no new structures or modifications being proposed as part of this use, so staff does find that that requirement is met as well. As required by statute, we did provide notice to property owners within 200 feet of the proposed use and did not receive any feedback either way on this item. And then just an additional note, since nationally there does tend to be an increased need for this type of use, and since our regulations do not address it, staff is planning to add language addressing the specific type of use in our next update to the development regulations will be, which will be back before you in hopefully January, so that we can have it addressed the next time that this would potentially come before you, but for now we do have to address it with the definitions that we have. So the staff would recommend approval of the special use permit with two stipulations, being that the operation should be limited to a maximum of 16 adult participants at any one time, and that no medical services shall be offered in conjunction with the facility. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now, and there are representatives for the proposed use here as well.
Okay, so I open a public hearing, so I didn't know if the applicant wanted to come talk, or did anyone want to speak? Yes. Yep.
Will you pass up first, please? Good evening, commissioners. My name is Elaine Bellardo, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to be here, but I do have some dispute with the definitions as they were stated. So I'd love to be here speaking to you about opening a boutique for middle-aged women that sell comfortable clothes and comfortable shoes, but that is obviously not why I'm here. My platform today is born of need. The building at 729 Pennsylvania Avenue is a means of addressing a gap in services that exists in Leavenworth County for families that are living with dementia. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak out for those that are living with early-onset Alzheimer's disease, like my husband here, right here. Rare Admiral retired Jose H. Bellardo III, who was diagnosed at the age of 50 while an inpatient at Walter Reed National Military Medical Center. Our life was ended by the tsunami of events that led to the diagnosis and the aftermath of receiving a terminal diagnosis. When we returned to Kansas, one of the first contacts that we made was to the Heart of America Alzheimer's Association, and we have a representative here as well. And it was there, we were looking for support, we were desperate for some kind of support, but what we found there really was hope. It came first through the staff and then through support groups, fundraising, and eventually through Jose's participation in the only non-medical supportive program in a 50-mile radius that he attends twice a week. We live in the 2nd Congressional District, but our resources are in the 3rd Congressional District. I drive 40 miles one way up to 160 miles in one day while paying $630 out-of-pocket every month. Twice a month, I drive to the Heart of America Alzheimer's Association in Prairie Village because it is the only place that has a concurrent support group where Jose can attend and I can attend. That does not exist in Leavenworth County. We find all of this travel worth it because Walter Reed gave us a very poor prognosis and suggested that Jose would be in a care facility at year three. We are at year three now, and he continues to do his own self-care with guidance, he engages readily with others, and it is programs like this that delay placement in long-term care facilities, which would cost $10,000 a month. Upon retirement, at the time of diagnosis, we had a choice to make between resources and relationships. Our resources are all in Johnson County. Our relationships are in Leavenworth County. We chose the relationships. Most people in the county do not have the ability to drive back and forth to Johnson County for resources. Serving others and advocating for the marginalized all over the world is exactly what Jose did for 26 and 1/2 years. He can no longer use his Masters in Social Work, or his law degree, or any of the other degrees that he's attained. So I have taken on the task, that is, the last thing a full-time caregiver like me should be doing, but it is the first thing that Jose H. Bellardo III would be doing. So we started a 501(c)(3), the Deeper Window Association, to make programs like this available in the 2nd District in Leavenworth County, where they do not exist. Non-paid caregiving is an exhausting task that overwhelms families. What I want you to know really today is that there is a need for non-medical dementia education programs that engage and empower people living with dementia while providing respite care for their partners. People in the early to moderate stage of this disease do not need, nor are they responsive to the term "adult daycare." They are people living with the disease and benefit from opportunities to make meaningful contributions to the community. The Deeper Window Association seeks to partner with people of Leavenworth County, the Heart of America Alzheimer's Association, schools, and faith-based organizations to give people the opportunity to assist with programs aimed at providing hope against a disease process that could affect anyone with a brain. While funding research to find a cure for this brutal disease is vital, so too is providing care assistance in all stages of the disease. When Jose was diagnosed, I promised him that I would be an advocate for him for every stage of the disease. Currently, this is the stage we are in, and this is the need that exists. Incurable does not mean imminent death. Long before dementia is a disease that one dies from, it is a disease that one lives with. On the first row are people that are very supportive of programs like this. We have a music therapist, we have Jeannie Reader, who was the person who started the program in Prairie Village, my husband Jose Bellardo. This is a representative from St. Cashmere, and he can answer any questions that you have about the property. This is Dave York, and I have partnered with him. He's the pastor at First United Methodist Church, and they have started the Air Dementia Ministry Program as of two weeks ago, and the first week that they started it, they had 18 people in attendance. And this is Shalay Harris, and she's from the Alzheimer's Association. Behind them is my board of directors, behind them is any number of volunteers that are willing to support me in this effort, and over here are people that are directly affected in the community by some that attend in Prairie Village, and some that need the services here, and some that have attended the Air Dementia Ministry. This is a great need inside of this community, and I'm willing to field any questions you may have.
I do have, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for your intent, and thank you for your plans, and thank you for what you're trying to do to bring dignity to people who have terrible diseases. My mother died of Alzheimer's, and I'll have a scar on my heart forever seeing my mother die like that. So I understand what you're doing on that. If there's one question I have, though, that I need you to address, is that, if anyone had that concern, is seeing my mother die of Alzheimer's and seeing the cost of that, which is outrageous, the quality of care which we try to provide, and the condition of my mother with Alzheimer's, there's the biggest concern I would have with bringing this to our community, which is so needed, and I'm for it. But the biggest concern would be security, is that when people have this, as you will know, because you've got a board, you've got incredible resources, technical and medical expertise there, the biggest concern is when people, as you will know, have Alzheimer's dementia. You have 16 people, you've got a low patient, quality care you're going to provide, you have no medical, I got that one, no medical, that's not what you're in business for, but quality care and giving people dignity. I need you to address, though, that this location, you have the location, you know what it was, and it's a building, and accessible, and the biggest thing is, address security for me, and anyone would feel comfortable with that. You have controls that make sure that we can contain people, that they cannot wander, get away, go to the wrong place, hurt themselves. Please address that for me.
Okay, I'll address it from my standpoint, and then if Jeannie Reader has anything to add to it, then she can continue. The way that I see this program is, it's stage-specific. So one of the requirements for you to be eligible for this program is that you meet the criteria of the stages, which means that you are not an elopement risk, you're not a wander risk, it's not for that stage of the disease. So my husband is certainly not going to elope or wander, that's not, it's stage-specific. So typically, when people start talking about this disease, they go straight to the end, and what I am saying is, is that we have to, the reason it's called the Deeper Window Project is because when we left Walter Reed, we were told to get home, get our affairs in order, because we have this short time. So we came home, got our affairs in order, and then we just sat there and looked at each other like, he's not dying, you know, he's okay, and he's still a contributor. So we looked deeper into the window that was dementia, and then that's when we figured out, there's, he had to do something. How do you go from being a regional health administrator for four states to doing absolutely nothing? And he wasn't an elopement risk, he's not at risk for wandering or maybe getting lost because he might not remember, but, you know, with a cellphone, he'll find his way. So that's not really what we're concerned about. That building has three doors and two providers, and they're usually in one room together doing the activities. So music would take place in one space, and they'd be together, and then lunch is in another space, and then the art is in another space, but they tend to move together as a group. The bathrooms are on the interior of the building, not the exterior of the building, so I just don't see it, you know, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, if you come back to the podium, we can hear you, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I created this program about nine years ago. We have never had anyone elope, we've never had anyone go to the door. We do have rules, and they know them, and we're all vigilant about it. We have not, we have never approached having any type of a problem like that. And as Elaine referred to the fact that it's stage-specific, the people are assessed before they begin the program. And there are some people who are not eligible for the program because they are too far along in the disease. And so that is one area that you don't have to worry about. Neither have we had behavior problems. But when you have a program that keeps them active and engaged, a, as she referred, it's going to delay placement. But beyond that, it's going to help them maintain their relationships, and that's what life is about, maintaining relationships, both with your family, friends, people in the community. And if I can just take a few more minutes of your time, I'd like to tell you, I haven't figured it out yet for 2019, but I'd like to tell you what this group of 16 people did in 2018. In 2018, they made 3,997 sandwiches, 1,200 sack lunches for two local food pantries in the Kansas City area. They made enough soup to feed 385 people at a food kitchen. They made and sold 120 jars of soup mixes and 60 jars of cookies and brownies to raise money to help fund this year's Christmas gifts. What did we do for Christmas? We made 70 snuggle packs. A snuggle pack is a fleece blanket, approximately 45 by 60, it's a new children's book, and it's a 12 to 16-inch stuffed animal. These went to several of the Christmas stores in the area for parents who have no money to purchase a gift for their children. We delivered 82 packages to two different facilities. 30 minutes after I delivered the last group of those gifts, I arrived at my home, and I was walking in, and my phone was ringing, and the lady said, "This is so-and-so from so-and-so agency, and I just wanted to tell you how wonderful these gifts are." And she said, "Do you have any more?" And I said, "No, I left you with," I think it was 42. She said, "I know, but they're all gone." So, you know, in addition to that, we stuffed 3,000 Easter eggs for our local church that does a community ride Easter egg hunt. We created 2,565 notes of encouragement for food pantries to add to their sack lunches that they distribute with support. These folks can remain active, engaged in their community, and can be a superhero. And let me tell you something, I work with superheroes every day. Thank you.
One final question, I'm just kidding. I have one more for you, just for my own peace of mind, because I'm sharing my story because of my mother, is that you brought up a point, and it deals with phases, and it's honest to tell, my mother died of Alzheimer's like level seven. It doesn't get any worse than that than seven, is how she died with no dignity. So you brought up the point about phases, and if you just addressed the thing, because I think that's critical, is that your program is more for entry-level people who are at a lower level, who meet the criteria of what you're doing. So address for me, if you don't mind, just so we can hear this, if you had a person in your program that you feel is elevating, moving to another phase, or step three, two or three or four, what would you do with the person, if you yourself, you've got to get a diagnosis, or someone has to deal with that? How do you handle that? If someone's in your program and you see them moving up, what happens then?
Okay. When a person, they do, they don't remain in the program forever.
Okay.
And a family, that is explained to a family right up front. So when we see that, you know, we watch, and when we feel like they're no longer appropriate for the program, they cannot participate in the various activities, they can't any longer do the food project, say making the sandwiches. We have a group, half the folks make the sandwiches, half of them pack the sandwiches. It's a matter of, you know, we all do it together. But when they can no longer do that, then I talk with the family and say, you know, but also, I'm a social worker by profession, and I'm LMSW, and I talk with families all the time, and I know, what are your long-term plans? And so upfront, I give them plenty of time and say, you know, we might have to move them on in the next two months.
Thank you.
And then I help them with that.
Thank you.
Could you just state your name and your title for the record?
Oh, yes. My name is Jeannie Reader, and I am an LMSW, worked for the association almost 16 years, and now I'm in private duty, private practice.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I just want to end with the fact that all that she said that they did, that was all in Johnson County, and what I'm saying is, that should all be in Leavenworth County. There's no reason why we can't partner with the shelter that we have here, there's no reason why we can't partner with the schools, there's no reason why that can't be right here. So that really is my hope and my expectation for the Deeper Window Association to accomplish in Leavenworth County.
Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Bellardo. Just for a point of clarification, when you first came up to the podium, did I understand, do you allude that maybe the term we're using isn't correct for what we're doing?
It's not, yeah, it's not adult. It's not adult daycare. Adult daycare would require licensure, it requires licensure, and it's more medical. This is an arts and inspiration program, and that's why I invited the music therapist to do it, you know, where she can talk to you about what the benefits of arts and inspiration. That's not what would happen.
It's like workshops-type thing, they have workshops?
Well, is there a, well, that's what I'm asking.
Are you asking about?
I'm just trying to clarify my own ignorance, so that when we move forward after the first of the year with addressing this need in the community, I want to make sure we're appropriately identifying or calling it what it is, so respectfully.
Social engagement.
Social engagement.
Social engagement for people that are living with dementia.
Social engagement?
Yeah, it's offering them an opportunity to socially engage with their peers, socially engage with the community, it's social engagement. And then the methods that are used are art and inspiration, so that can be any of the arts, that could be drama, music, written therapy, verbal arts, it can be inside of those things, that are all cognitively stimulated.
I will just note for the commission, too, when Ms. Bellardo first brought the proposal to our staff, I reached out to the Mid-America Regional Council and had them reach out to other communities in the region to see how they address this type of use, and every community calls it something a little different in their definitions and addresses it a little bit differently. And as with most uses, we have to kind of settle on a word or a phrase to call it that may not be 100% representative of what goes on, but we need to be able to cover sort of a range of uses within a phrase or a title that we're assigning to something, and most other cities in the region do have sort of a variation on a care facility or something like that that would provide this type of service.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. That's all my questions, that's all your questions? Did you have any other questions? Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Okay. Come on in. My name is Mary Vardeman. I live in the neighborhood, I live at 1802 Cleveland Terrace, which is basically right behind this building where Ms. Bellardo wants to have her Alzheimer-dementia social club, for what you want to call it. When I look out my back door, which is on Arthur Street, two houses down to the south of me is a childcare facility. A block over from Broadway, I'm looking at the Council on Aging. And then when I look to the north, I see the back of the building where she wants to put her center. Am I worried about security? And I think it's a good idea what you brought up, but absolutely not. If somebody would accidentally wander away, I would be happy to take them back if I'm at home. That's part of the community, that's what I'm there for. This center would cause me far fewer problems than the trash dumpsters and the recycling that St. Cashmere has out there, even though I use the recycling bin myself. On a nice windy Kansas day, it ends up in my yard. So this center is so desperately needed in our community, and I am part of the community that it's literally physically going to touch, and it just needs to be there. Please let it be there, don't let anything get in the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the Reverend Dr. Dave York, pastor at First United Methodist Church, Leavenworth. You know, we believe that the love of the church and the love of Jesus Christ will transform people's lives, and the way churches work is to do that through providing, in our language, ministry. And we believe the Deeper Window Project is a great group to partner with. We've created an air dementia ministry, so for arts, inspiration through music and respite care. One of the things that we're doing, we're not medical, we're not therapeutic, we're a church, but one of the things that we're providing is respite care for the caregivers. We have a once-a-week, three-hour timeframe where the caregiver who's working with, who's living with somebody with Alzheimer's and dementia can have their loved one be in a safe environment, where we're helping to delay the disease, we can't cure it, we all know that, but then they can go and do the things that they need to be able to do, whether it's take a break, or take a nap, or go shopping, or we had a lady today that said, "I'm going to go home and do laundry." And what she ended up doing was no laundry, and she hung her Christmas decorations. It's a very human thing that we're doing. The people living with early and middle stages Alzheimer/dementia and their caregivers really have nothing here in Leavenworth County, nothing at all. And it's not because we don't care, and it's not because we aren't sympathetic and those kinds of things, I think we just have a gap in our care community that nobody has really addressed, and I'm very pleased to see St. Cashmere stepping up and filling that need with facility. We're stepping into that process. We're hopeful to be pulling together quite a few things with working with kids, maybe in the school, to provide partnership with them, working with Human Animal Bond, to have them come in. I see this kind of ministry program as something that can draw the community together. When we had our open house today, I was surprised at the number of people when they started talking and having discussion, came up with the idea, and somebody mentioned a name, and I'll bet four or five people in the room said, "I know that person, I've known them from," you know, and they start talking about everywhere they've known everybody. And what we're finding is, there's a network of people, and this doesn't come up in casual conversation, that you're, like, my dad has early dementia, and my mother-in-law has it, that's the kind of stuff you don't talk about with just general conversation, but then when you start to go a little But then when you start to go a little deeper with it, you find out it's very common. There's not 10 degrees of separation for people who can identify with the disease. And one of the things we find is, the people living with the disease are often isolated, and their caregivers are isolated. So we see these kinds of ministries as a way to develop connections in the community with the caregiver and the person living with the disease. And I'm glad to see the churches are partnering and helping to take the lead with that. And I highly recommend that if this facility works and it's within your power to allow the Deeper Window Project to do that. We've partnered with Elaine Bellardo, and she's terrific. She'll provide great leadership for it. You can tell the leadership she's provided with all of the people who are here to support it. So we're really pleased to be able to do that for our community, and we think this is a, we're advocates for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Shalay Harris. I'm the program director for the Heart of America chapter at the Alzheimer's Association. I'm about six months into this job, and I love it. My mother was diagnosed about four years ago, and my sister is her caretaker, and they live in Wichita, Kansas. I've been a public health nurse for about 15 years. I worked with Rural Admiral Jose on many levels, on the state and regional level, in infant mortality, actually. And we knocked that rate down, didn't we, Jose? We did. So I just wanted to say that we are so excited about what Elaine has stepped out to do. We're in great support of any kind of programming that comes up towards this area, the KC metro area. As a good public health servant, the first thing I did when I got in this seat was really took a good assessment by data and of our current programming and the gap analysis that I was looking at in our 65-county service area. And Leavenworth was something that really popped out to me on our map. You have about a quarter of your people that are over 65 years of age. And while this meets an immediate need, I know this is also going to grow our impact and our programming to those that do attend this program. We are really focusing on early diagnosis and detection, healthy brain and healthy living, and to decrease isolation, this program helps that as well, because we, too, want to help our payers, our physicians, and our health systems to keep those the healthiest they can be and in the home as long as possible, and this program will help that as well. So just wanted to say that piece, and wanted you all to know that there's resources and support that we are bringing from the association to help Elaine with this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joseph Clark. I'm past pastor of Lane Chapel in Topeka, but I live in Leavenworth, Kansas, and I live about right across the street from the facility that there's going to be housing. And I'm glad to hear that it, I shouldn't say glad to hear, but when I heard that it wasn't an adult daycare center, because I had questions about that as well, because of all the paperwork that you have to go through to have, you know, something like that. But I'm standing in favor of this support, because I'm probably a lot older than people think I am, and I really don't know at this stage whether I will be needing these services, and I'd rather not have to drive 100 miles to, you know, to enjoy the services, like to stay right here in my community. So I just thought I'd share that with you. You know, I have assisted on, how would you say, furnishing the place, the facility that we're going to be using, and I'm looking forward for an opportunity to be even a bigger part of what's going on in this community.
Thank you.
Amen.
My name is Bill McTamey, and I'm a member of this Finance Council, First Sacred Heart and St. Cashmere's. We would be the property owners of this piece of property. 729 was built in the 1990s as a preschool. It's a relatively new building, but when they reorganized the Catholic school system, it became vacant. It sat vacant now for about 10 years, and we would love to see it utilized. We've looked at Elaine's proposal, and we completely support it. We think it's a needed resource for this community, and again, we wish her the best.
Hi. My name is Karen Rim, and I'm a board certified music therapist. I've been practicing for 13, 14 years, and I've been a part of Jeannie's Place since it started, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so nine years. And in a nutshell, I'll say, because I could go on and on and on about the power of music, but why is music therapy so beneficial with people with Alzheimer's? There is evidence-based research and PET scans indicate that music is globally processed. So it bypasses the language centers and goes to the emotional centers of the brain, the limbic system, where our memories and we can evoke good memories by playing music that is preferred. And so that's important to know your client and know what kind of music they love. Jose loves Motown every time. And we just, we use music to improve mood states. It activates movement, and so we're dancing, we're doing physical exercise. You wonder why people like to exercise to music, it's because our body entrains to the rhythm, and so music is powerful in that way. So then you create endorphins that trigger feeling good. So we're doing lots of memory recall, we're sharing. And one of the things that I found that I think is most important in having a center like this is, it is very isolating, and when we have people come in, they find people that are going through the same experience that they are. They share, they talk, they find camaraderie and community and support, and we have a lot of fun. And a lot of times, we share, music can evoke different memories, and we share and we talk about it, and you just never know what's going to happen. And mostly, somebody, one of the gals said this past week, we were laughing, and she goes, we always have fun here. And it's absolutely true. It's like a party. So there are more serious things going on, but social interaction, sharing, just all kinds of things. So I hope that you will approve her request, and I think the community and connection is much needed. So thank you.
I wanted to talk again to you just for a minute to tell you more about the programming. It is based on the arts. It's music, it's drama, it's poetry and literature, which can be a thousand things. We have a philosophy club, and somebody said to me, you're actually starting a philosophy club for people with Alzheimer's? Yes, I am. And we had a great time with it, and we still do it. But one of the things that we did in poetry and literature, we wrote a poem, and I'd like to read it to you. It started off with me sharing a story with them, and then talking about, what is this story about? And different ones were saying things, and we finally got to everybody having the consensus, well, it's really about hope. And I said, bingo. Let's write a poem about hope. So it indulged me a little bit in sharing this poem with you that they wrote. And how they wrote it was, I said, hope is, and somebody responded, hope is like a dream that comes true. Hope is like a box of chocolates, might be a cherry on top. Hope is like the springtime and new beginning. What is hope? It's like the morning sunrise, full of joy. Hope is like a newborn baby, opening its eyes. When do you hope? I said to them. I hope when it's the darkest night. I hope when things need to go better. I hope for peace when the wars are raging. I hope even when the sun is not shining. What are you hoping for? I said. I hope for the day when there's no discrimination. I hope for the day when there's no more hunger for one and all. I hope for the day when we all come together to settle our differences, when we listen to one another. I hope for the day our children never have to go to war. And then I said to them, this is really good. What do you think? How do we wrap this up? How do we, what do we want to really say to them? And here was their answer, loud and clear. There is no hope. There is no tomorrow without hope. You have to share your hope. If you find yourself without hope, I'll share mine with you. Thank you. These people are incredible. They can do things when you give them the support that they need. Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up to the podium?
Did you guys have any questions?
Yes, to close the public hearing.
Then I go ahead and close the public hearing and open the discussion among the commissioners.
I do have a couple of comments. I'm glad we clarified the point on adult daycare, because I didn't like the name of it. I'm glad you brought that point up to clarify exactly the point of social engagement, our arts and inspiration. It's much more descriptive of the intent, and it makes me feel a lot better. The other thing is, as most of us know, it wasn't long ago, six, seven years ago, that Leavenworth finally got serious and put a shelter of hope in. We finally came together, put that shelter of hope in. My wife and I have been working the last five years, so 50, there's over 50 churches in Leavenworth, Lansing, 50 churches. And by going to that shelter of hope, we did that with a daycare center, consolidational services, over 200, 250, 300 volunteers worked the shelter of hope. So not only is it a program that helps people in need, but people volunteer for that like they would do, and I think that brings dignity to people. When you get the volunteer to work the shelter of hope, or people volunteer for that, I think it's a win-win situation, in my opinion. Sister Vicki, as you a lot of you know, is a Catholic, was a driving force behind the homeless shelter, and it's 25 to 30 people, she said every night. Most of them may not need this program, but it's just another program that Sister Vicki would have, where we've gone from different programs in our community. This is just another intent, in my opinion, that we need to bring dignity to people. I think it's a great fit, and it's a much more involved than just the people, there are 16 people at a time. The volunteers could be a couple hundred. I think that's a tremendous win-win for our community, in my opinion.
I agree. There needs to be a beginning for this, and even all the supporters, which is great, out here this evening, and it's just the interaction, like they said, and the engagement that people have with each other, and, you know, it makes them safe. They're not going through it alone. And this is the earlier stages, and like, they just don't want to, like you were saying, just when they said, okay, well, it's time to go home and get your, you know, everything in order, and you're like, well, we're not ready to do that yet. I know your husband's probably like, well, no, they're, you know, we're all human, you know, and they're, and it sounds like everyone engages with everyone else and has a great time, you network, and you meet new friends, you meet new family, and this is really needed in the community, you know? And like you said, it's hope. It's hope.
You can feel the synergy with this.
Yes.
The various people, the mental health, the psychiatrist, to all the reverend here, the church, the laypeople, and all of that, it's a synergy thing. It just connects so many people together.
It does.
It really does.
And it's all positive.
Yeah, I think it's a terrific idea. I do have some questions as far as, for the staff, as far as the special use process itself. So if the special use is approved, then Ms. Bellardo is the special use owner, is that correct? If she leaves, the special use goes away.
It would be this organization.
The organization.
Yes.
Deeper Window.
Yeah.
And the special use is for one year and then renewed, or how does that work?
No, it would, it's just granted to this user for this use at this location. So if she were to want to go somewhere else, then we'd have to reevaluate at that point to see where else this was going to move. But it's for as long as this use is at this specific location.
And I guess the only other question I would have is, on the, you provided some conditions that you recommended, specifically with the 16 adult participants at a time, and no medical services offered. Should there also be a condition dealing with the hours that the facility is operational?
That would be up for the commission to decide if you wanted to add something like that.
What, well, maybe I was looking, wasn't it like 9:00 to 3:00?
9:00 to 3:00, yes.
Okay. Monday through Friday?
They would all go two days a week.
Okay, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Is Friday still 9:00 to 3:00, but like, you said, socialization?
Yeah, the insurance won't allow for drop-in. But we can't, you can't have a drop-in program.
Oh.
Insurance or the people who are listening.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have any issue with the condition being that the facility would be open from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
One question I have, so if we approve the special use permit, under the name that we now know that's not accepted, adult daycare, if we decide that we're going to change the name, do we have to come back and do this process all over again, or will this program be grandfathered under any name change we make?
Yeah, this would be issued as it is, and then moving forward, if we, you know, adopt some different regulations, that would be from that point forward.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a use that is obviously needed, and I am my husband's caregiver at this point in time, and when I first started using some respite care, I felt very guilty about it, but he really benefited from it, because he got somebody else to talk to besides me. And he had a little bit of an outlet. It really, it perked him up a lot better. So it's an absolute need for our community, because so many people are suffering from this. And there are a lot of emphasis on caregiver support, and there are a lot of caregiver support groups in the area, but this is a definite need we need to fill in our community, be able to offer our community.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Okay, so our action and options, I will read off to either motion based upon findings as stated and conditions as presented to recommend approval to the city commission with included conditions, a motion to recommend denial to the city commission, or table the issue for additional information and consideration. So I need someone to make a motion on one of those.
I'll make a motion to approve special use permit application for an adult daycare center to be located at 729 Pennsylvania Avenue, at the St. Cashmere Church property, with the recommendations placed on it by staff.
Did you want to add a condition regarding the operating hours?
I would. I don't know if the commissioner is willing to do it or not.
For the, oh, to add the operating hours?
Like Monday through Friday?
Oh, the operating hours?
Yeah.
Eight to five?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, and as requested by.
Right. Okay. So do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Great, so that'll go to the city commission, I believe, at the second regular meeting of this month.
Thank you all for coming.
I know, we'll have nobody here to support us.
First solid, I don't, stay here. I don't think. It's dis, it's demeaning.
It is.
It's depression, but it's very descriptive.
It's very.
So, I'll work on something.
I didn't give, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good. It's funny.
Thank you.
A little bit of.
Am I going to answer? I'm going to.
My brother died all the time. I was on the waitlist at Brooks, at Medical Center in San Antonio, trying to give him a medical society out of San Antonio, until he waited, until he waited.
Okay. And.
Hey, Camon?
Yes.
We only have these folks, no, we have other businesses that we have.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be.
If you could say something for them to go on the line, or.
facility out of San Antonio, two-year waiting list, two-year waiting list.
Okay. And if you want to...
Hey, Kamala?
Yes.
We really have these folks know we have other business that we got to do.
Yeah.
By recommendation to me.
If you could say something for them to go on the line or... Okay.
I got a voice, I'll do it. Let me do it, I'll just say it. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me, everyone.
We have additional meeting that we have to talk about. We take it outside the hallway, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know. Thank you.
It's okay. I'm used to yelling.
I don't want to say that. Get it, no, I know. They're excited.
Yes, they are.
I get it.
Take it outside.
Thanks for, I'm going to go and tell my wife, "Honey, honey, I was at this working time, another brilliant woman, she said, "If anything happens to me, put Miss Pro," because I just don't want to talk to only you. I need another person to talk to besides you. Thank you.
My father-in-law had, and my mother-in-law, about three, four years before she had stroke. And we really feel the stress of taking care of her.
Go ahead.
And then my sister-in-law and brother-in-law moved in and took care of her.
Okay, ours, are we on, our second new business?
It's good.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you. Our second new business this evening, 2019-16 R E Z, 1,001 North 7th Street. Just to conduct a public hearing, the applicant is requesting a rezoning of their property from R1-6 High Density Single Family Residential District to GBD General Business District. The property used, used to be a church, Life Connection Ministries, which vacated in the summer of 2019 and has remained vacant in the, to this date. Okay, City Planner Jackie Porter is going to handle this one.
Thank you. Okay, as, as Chairman stated, this is requesting a rezoning for a business that's been operating as a church before and congregating in same commercial zoning all around it. Prior use of the property has been a general business commercial since...
You need to speak up a little bit.
Sorry. The general business commercial use has been for this property since 1955, when it originally was built. And it was originally used to be, oh, I just got really loud. Was, oh, I lost my place. Built for office space throughout that whole building and then the church came, was the most recent and it's been frequently used as office space until then. So the applicant is suggesting to rezone it to its proper zoning versus being residential. And there may be minor exterior changes, it's going to depend on who the new tenant will be. So, onto the conditions of determination. The, we'll go through the characteristics of the neighborhood. The subject property is the site of a former Life Connection Ministry building, which is currently vacant. To the south is a multi-story apartment building. And then to the southeast is an office building that is currently vacant and is zoned commercial. And then to the east is a restaurant. And then to the north is a barber shop. And the remainder of the neighborhood consists of single-family homes. The subject property is located on North 7th Street, which is classified as a collector's street and designed to handle moderate volumes of traffic. And to the west of the building is a parking lot, is designed to facilitate the customers, which, here's a parking lot over to the, to the west to hold the parking for customers. B, the zone, the zoning and use of the properties nearby. To the south, the subject property is the apartments. It's zoned office business, business district. To the southeast, the vacant commercial building is GBD. To the east is an office business district. And then the barber shop is also considered an office business district. And then to the west, the single family is also zoned office business district. And the remainder outside that is residential. C, the sustainability of subject properties to use in which it has been restricted. The subject property was built in 1955 as an office building. The building has been used as an office building and an assembly hall since, since construction and is unsuited for residential use. D, the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimental effects nearby properties. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effects upon surrounding properties. The subject building has been used for general business district qualifications uses since it was constructed in 1955. No significant effects on the nearby property is anticipated due to the rezoning. E, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned since the last remaining tenant was vacated in the summer of 2019. F, the relative gain of economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual, individual landowners. The proposed rezoning will have a positive effect on the public health and welfare by providing a correct zoning to the, to correlate with the surrounding properties along a moderate-used collector's street, which has been proposed by the 2010 Comprehensive Plan to be zoned commercial. G, the recommendation permitted or, or staff. Staff recommends approval of rezoning. H, the land, oh, the land use, the area is identified as appropriate for, based on the land use, as mentioned earlier, as it's their one, they suggest to be commercial. And then I, such other factors as, which may be relevant to particularly proposed amendments, there are none. And that is it for me.
Thank you, thank you. So I guess I open up for the commissioners, if you have any questions on the staff reports.
Wasn't there a martial arts school or something located there at one time?
I'm not sure in this specific location, the owner is here and could let us know what all has been here previously.
Well, that's still there, that's another building.
No, this is, this is the pharmacy. It used to be like Storms.
Okay.
And then Jeans.
Yeah, I don't think at any point there was martial arts in this particular spot.
Now, if it was, if it was rezoned to general business district and a, a church wanted to go in, is that still approved, allowed? Thank you.
Seems to me this makes sense, given that we talked about in September with regards to the, you know, that North Gateway project. It seemed it would be supportive of developing that whole two-block area that's just adjacent to, across the street, actually.
Right, just to the north. Yeah, I mean, looking down 7th Street, the, the property we're talking about is the one right there where the arrow is. And that's the only, the yellow is residential, that's really the only residential zoned property along that whole 7th Street corridor. I'm not sure why we have these little pockets throughout town where the zoning just doesn't correlate to any use that's ever been there. I think zoning was put in in 1964, maybe.
And this is at, what, 1955?
Yeah, the building was constructed prior to zoning being in place in the city. And so we do have a number of these little instances throughout town where the zoning just does not match up with what's been there at all. And so, again, this is really just bringing it to match what the building was built for.
It looks like, you know, everything along there, I drove up past there and there's several things along there that are business already. It'd just be putting it in the, making like a correction to the map, this is what it's going to be. And it's obviously a commercial building.
Yeah. And I, and you can see, just to the west of it, there's that, the little sliver of office zoning. I'm not sure how that ended up there either. You know, we went back and looked through old ordinances, thinking that maybe it had been rezoned at some point and just not shown on the map. We couldn't find anything, we checked with the Register of Deeds, we just couldn't find anything. So, yeah, I'm not sure how the zoning got to be there, but this is, yeah, really just correcting the zoning that's in place with, what's actually there.
Okay.
I think it's pretty much a no-brainer type thing. It depends on what it has to be.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Mr. Greenamire, did you want to come up or say anything?
Unless you have questions.
No.
If you have any questions, no.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. So I just need a motion to be made to either recommend approval of the rezoning request for R1-6 to GBD to the city commission, recommend denial of the rezoning request from R1-6 to GBD to the city commission, or table the issue for additional information and consideration. Do I have a motion?
Based on the findings as stated and the information as provided during the public hearing, I recommend approval of a zoning request from R1-6 to GBD to the city commission.
Do you have a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay? That's done. Okay.
I would like to say to thank you for the applicant for coming and being available, answering questions, even though it's kind of a straightforward process.
I'm sorry you're all by yourself. No, no, everyone left.
They're waiting for you.
They are. They're waiting.
Okay, is there any other business?
We don't have any other items. Do we have any applications for January? We have one application for January. And then we'll hope to have the updates to the development regulations ready. We keep finding more and more things that we want to change. We try to get as many as we can in one batch, so we're not left with a bunch throughout the year. So at some point, we're going to have to cut it off and just bring it forward. But hopefully that's in January, it'd be February at the latest. So we will see you in January. And then I will just mention that tonight is Kamala's last planning commission meeting since she was elected to the city commission. And so she gets sworn in as a commissioner next week there. And so we just had a little certificate, so thank you for your service for planning.
Oh, yeah, I know, I will. Thanks.
We promise only to give you the hard cases from now on.
The hard cases, oh, thank you so much.
All the ones that are difficult.
Thank you.
Right.
No.
So Julie, does that mean we need to vote on a new officer, is there anything next?
We will do that at our next meeting. And I believe there are several people who've expressed interest in serving on the planning commission. And so we've let those individuals know that, like all you had to do, fill out an application with the city clerk and then whoever is chosen to be mayor next week, on the 10th, that the new mayor will have the responsibility to appoint a new person to fill Kamala's spot on the planning commission.
Well, you think they'll appoint him next week?
No, they won't appoint him next week.
I mean, for January, but I mean...
We are hoping that we can have somebody appointed by the end of December, just since we do have a number of things coming up, an update to the development regulations. We're getting ready to start the comprehensive plan update next year, so, yeah, I'll be busy. And so hoping to have someone fairly quick.
Best is by fire.
Did the city commission pick, you know, with regards to that meeting we went to last two weeks ago, did they pick?
In regards to the comprehensive plan?
Yep.
They decided to wait until next week, on the 10th, to discuss that and select a consultant. A couple of weeks ago, we had both consultants, Shaki Consulting and RDG, presented at the city commission meeting, both gave really good presentations. Staff would be happy with either of them, they'll both do, either would do a great job for the comprehensive plan. So the commission, I think, just decided that they wanted to wait until they had a full commission present. Commissioner Dedeky, who knows, had some health issues and hasn't been at a few of the last meetings. And then they wanted a little bit more time to look over the sample completed comp plans that we had sent them from each of the consultants to make a little better, more informed decision. So that should be happening next Tuesday and we'll let you know who they select.
Or come next Tuesday.
Did you receive my list of...
We did, we got that on Tuesday and I will say just with...
I knew I should have said it sooner.
Yeah, with being out of the office for the holidays, we didn't have a chance to get through it, so...
Probably didn't have time.
Yeah, so we will get through that and have all that for you.
I just jot things down in my phone whenever I see something that, that I'm driving by and I see something, "Oh, what's going on there?", you know, so...
So we'll get you some info on that for the next meeting. And anybody, as, as you see things, you can send them to me whenever, if you have questions, you don't have to wait. So you have a list of a dozen or so. But, yeah, we'll get you all that information at the next meeting.
Any update on the North Gateway? Anything new?
Nothing new. The commission approved the proposed project plan that you all saw. And so that really just kind of sets in place the financing mechanism for them to move forward. But that's, other than that, we haven't seen anything, they haven't brought anything back as far as users or anything like that.
So, do I do a motion to...
Just say, "Word adjourned."
Word adjourned.
All right.
For my last time.
Yeah, you can practice though, you gotta do it for the other option.